Brody walked around.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Y'all ready for the holidays?
Yeah.
They'll get you up at four in the morning. She's doing really well. Back in, exactly.
Thanks.
The whole time where they said it was good.
You can do the, what is it?
Last time we drove, it was two years ago. I wasn't a big fan.
Absolutely. How are you? Good to see you. Here, tell you, I got into. So, we're excited about. And your daughter, both of them with you. So, we're excited. The zoning. Yeah, so that'll be fun. All right, I'll see you a little. Thanks. Yes.
Congratulations, man. That's awesome.
I've never met a place like that before.
I haven't seen it work yet, so we'll see.
Go ahead, man. Fifty-one hundred.
Honestly, it's just.
Get him right. I told everyone else we had the place replaced.
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, they probably won't be as, even though they're bright still, they might, won't be as.
We turned it.
Thank you. Do you have a show? Need one. I've got one.
Oh, yeah.
Rest. Yes. He was real short, so he needed one. Right. That's right.
Good evening, everybody. Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome. Thank you all for coming out, for those watching online. Item one is invocation and pledge. We have with us Bishop Helya Castilla with Smyrna Worship Center at 2600 Davenport Speed. It's Davenport Street. I'd invite you up now, Pastor, to give our invocation. Everybody, please rise.
Thank you. It is indeed an honor to petition God's throne of grace. Let's look to the Lord. Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity. This is a day that you made, so we rejoice and we're glad to see it. The scripture declares that you are great, you are high and lifted up from everlasting to everlasting. You are God, and we adore you at this moment. We not only adore you for who you are, but we thank you for all you've done. You've led us through pandemic, through economic challenges, through political differences. Every step of the way, you've been there. You're God, and we just thank you for your goodness and your mercy. We agree with a songwriter who says, if you never do anything else, you've already done more than enough. Now that we've adored you and we thank you, we also want to acknowledge our own shortcomings and just acknowledge that you are good and merciful God. We thank you for forgiving us when we have come short of what you would have for us to do. Now finally, Father, we petition your throne of grace. We ask for these leaders that you have appointed and anointed, that you give them uncommon wisdom. You give them uncommon courage. You give them uncommon grace and vision as they lead your people. Finally, Father, we pray that you and you alone would superintend this meeting. Have your way in our midst. Visit this meeting. May it not just be another city council meeting, but may you put your imprint on it such that great things would come therefore. Lord, we ask all of these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, whose birthday we celebrate during this time. It's in his name that we pray. Amen and amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop, for being with us tonight. Appreciate that. Item two is agenda changes. We don't have any. Item three is the mayoral report. I'm gonna be brief tonight. It's been kind of quiet since the last time we met, which is nice. I do want to remind everybody that the menorah lighting is tomorrow at Bronner at 5:30, and they do a giant gelt drop. And they bring the ladder truck out from the fire department and drop the gold chocolate coins, and it's, they have a lot of other entertainment. It's a pretty fun thing and great celebration, so I hope everybody will come out for that. Item four is land issue zonings and annexations, 4A Z22-014. This is a public hearing. Zoning request Z22-014. Allow a rezoning from GC to MU for the development of 24 residential lofts and 9,450 square feet of office and commercial area. 1.09 acres, land lot 559, 2934 Atlanta Road, Zero Atlanta Road, and 2950 Atlanta Road, Tenalta LLC and J Mac Corp. This is in Ward Three with Councilman Lindley.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself from the discussion and the vote.
Okay. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tenalta LLC and J Mac Corporation is requesting a rezone 1.09 acres of assembled properties along Atlanta Road from General Commercial to MU Conditional for the development of a four-story, 37,800-square-foot mixed-use building, which includes 24 residential lofts at a density of 22 units per acre and 9,450 square feet of commercial office space. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing restaurant and office building to construct the mixed-use development. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval by a vote of 4-3 at the November 14, 2022, meeting. The Urban Design Commission recommended approval by a vote of 7-0 at the December 12, 2022, meeting. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Ward Three. I'll turn it over to Mr. Lindley, who I'm sure will recognize Rusty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rusty, I'm gonna let you take it.
Good evening. Rusty Martin with the City of Smyrna, Community Development Department, Community Development Director. Joe did a great job summarizing where we're at with this case. This property is within the Urban Design District for downtown. It went before the Urban Design Commission. Was recommended for approval by a vote of 7-0. It also went to the Planning and Zoning Board with a recommendation of approval of 4 to 3. The property is just over an acre in size. It's located at the corner of Church Street and Atlanta Road. It's an assemblage of three properties, the Ken Corrigan Grill property, the vacant lot next to that, and then the Cochran Edwards Law Firm property to the south. The applicant is proposing to demo the existing buildings and is proposing to construct a 37,000-square-foot mixed-use building. That'll be four stories in size with commercial retail space on the bottom floor and then 24 residential units on the second through fourth floor. The existing zoning is general commercial. They are requesting to rezone the property to mixed-use conditional. The future land use plan has this property as mixed use for the future land use designation. They are not proposing to change that land use designation as mixed use is an acceptable zoning category under the mixed use, future land use category. So, it'll remain the same, and there's no change to request to make that change. As you can see, there's public institutional to the west, and then everything to the north, east, and south is all mixed use. This is the proposed site plan. You have the four-story building pulled up fronting along Atlanta Road. This, these are all three properties as part of the assemblage. It's a 9,450-square-foot footprint. So, the first level is going to be office and retail, and the levels two through four are going to be residential units, lots. With this zoning district, you're allowed a front setback of zero, a side setback of zero, and a rear setback of 20 feet. And within the mixed-use zoning classification, there is also a maximum building setback, and that's at 20 feet. So, that building has to be within 20 to 0 feet of the, of the front property line. At the rear of the property, there's a two-level parking deck. The bottom level of that parking deck will be access from the Atlanta Road entrance, and the top level of that parking deck will be access from Church Street. There is no ramping system within the deck, so each level of those decks are accessed from different entry, entry points. There are 68 total spaces within that deck, and then there's an additional five spaces outside. The Church Street access is a right-in, right-out, so there will not be the opportunity to make a left-in from Church Street. So, only, the only access will be as you're heading eastbound on Church Street into the development, and then when you're exiting the development, you'll also head eastbound towards Atlanta Road. The Atlanta Road access point is a full access drive, so you can make all the turning movements out of there. And Engineering has also requested some modifications with respect to striping within Atlanta Road on that side, and we'll get to that later. There is a loading area along Church Street and Atlanta Road. Within our staff recommendation, we are proposing to screen that loading area. From Church Street with a wall and/or landscaping, the loading area is necessary for the commercial uses that are planned on, on the bottom floor, the, the development. The dumpster enclosure is located at the rear of the property. And then you have an underground stormwater management facility there, and then also on the Atlanta Road side at the bottom down there as well. With this development, you got a 20-foot landscape buffer, and that'll screen the parking deck from the church property to the rear. And then with this request, there's three variances, and they're due, they deal with the access to the site as well as within the Urban Design District. It does not allow, it, it caps the overall parking to 120% of the, the minimum requirement. So, with this request, they're asking to go from 41 spaces up to 73 to accommodate the commercial uses and residential uses on site. And then there is a third variance that requires all that excess above the minimum number of parking spaces to be porous concrete. And they can't do that within the parking deck that's provided, so they need to vary from that request. Staff supports those requirements. The driveway cut on Atlanta Road is the existing driveway cut for the, for the office building. They are reducing the number of cuts, potential and existing cuts, on Atlanta Road with this development, which is potentially three, three total cuts, and they're going down to one. So, staff is supportive of that as well. Here's the proposed elevations for the development. As you can see, it's, it's got a brick first floor, and then they're using cement fiber board for floors two through four. There are some balconies on the sides for the residential units above. All the storefronts for the commercial space will all front on Atlanta Road. And then, as you can see on that top picture, you've got the parking deck there with the access to it. And that reflects a, a brick facade that matches the, the commercial space, which was a recommendation of staff to require that that parking deck be sort of in line with the rest of the building. Here's the floor plan for the development. The first floor is on the bottom. It, as soon as they have a, a tenant picked out for those spaces, it'll, it'll be designed accordingly. But right now, they are planning for retail uses, for restaurant uses, or potentially office space as well. The second through fourth floor, those are the residential units. You have four units, you have eight units total per floor. You have four two-bedroom units and then four one-bedroom units. The two-bedroom units are located on the end caps of the building, and then the, the one-bedroom units are located in the interior of the floor. And then here are the pictures of the subject properties. And then the adjacent properties to give you a little context. Community Development is recommending approval from GC to MU, conditional, with the following conditions. The standard conditions are from section 1201. Number one deals with the composition of the mixed-use building. Number two requires stormwater management, and that stormwater management to be screened from the public. Number three requires all utilities to be underground. Number four requires a developer be responsible for traffic improvements. Number five prohibits the bearing of debris on site. Number six requires decor, the installation of decorative streetlights. Number seven requires there to be a, a tree plan for the development and for the developer to follow the city's current tree ordinance. Number eight, those plans need to be designed by Georgia Registered Landscape Architect. And number nine, the areas in, in, and around the property need to be landscaped and sotted. Then we added some special conditions that are outside the, the standard conditions. Number 10 deals with the building setbacks for the development. Number 11 requires the developer to meet all fire access requirements deemed necessary by the fire marshal. Number 12 requires the developer to meet, to provide all water and sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director. 13 requires the developer to provide all stormwater improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number 14 requires the extension of, requires a sidewalk connection from Atlanta Road sidewalk to the multi-use trail. Number 15 requires the average floor area for the residential units to be an average of 900 square feet. 16 requires shared parking amongst the uses within the parking deck. Number 17 requires all utility and air conditioning units and transformers to be screened from view of the public right-of-way. 18 requires dumpsters to be enclosed with a, a brick enclosure and then be screened. Number 19 requires a five-foot sidewalk, and this is to connect from Atlanta Road to the existing sidewalk on Church Street. 20 restricts the access on Church Street from right-in to right-out. 21, Atlanta, Atlanta Road should provide a large turning radius on that access. Number 22, there may be some striping improvements that need to be done to Atlanta Road to accommodate queuing for a left-hand turn. 23 requires the, that they replace the curb and gutter and grass strip in kind if they remove it during the development process for the multi-use trail and the curb and gutter along Atlanta Road and Church Street. 24, there needs to be a small dedication for the sidewalk along Church Street. 25, the right-of-way dedication on Atlanta Road to be measured from 50 feet from the center line of the road to three feet back a sidewalk. So, that usually takes place during the permitting process. 26, there shall not exceed 24 residential units for the development, and those residential units got to be constructed in a Class A, first-class manner. 28 is a list of components that need to be part of those residential units and then the interior finishes that go along with that to be constructed to condo standards and to owner-occupied standards. And those deal with building heights and type of cabinets, decorative lighting fixtures, type of flooring, and tile surrounds and stuff like that. 29 limits the development to 50% one-bedroom and 50% two-bedroom. Number 30 restricts the height of the overall building to 66 feet, which is already the mixed-use zoning district standard. 31 deals with the parking deck and requires the exterior brick, brick facade. 32 requires that that loading area be screened with a solid brick wall, lattice work, or trees or shrubbery. 33 allows for the maximum parking to be increased to 73 spaces. 34 eliminates the requirement for the excess of the minimum parking number to be porous concrete. 35, the driveway cut on Atlanta Road should be allowed. And 36 requires the development of the site to be in substantial compliance with the site plan submitted. 37 ties the elevations of the building to the elevation submitted. And then 38 deals with a recommendation from the UDC that during the permitting process and prior to the issuance of the building permit, that the, the developer will come back and provide those final details to work out with the UDC as to what the facade materials are gonna be, what the window casings are gonna be, and our, other architectural elements are gonna be for the development. With that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you guys, and I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Rusty. Anybody have any questions of Rusty? Mr. Welch.
Rusty, can, can you flashback the, the last screen, 37, 38?
Okay.
It's my understanding, as it says there in item 38, that they have to go back to UDC prior to building approval. And 37 limits the elevations to what was submitted on that plan. I, I guess my, my concern is I'd, I'd like to see some improvements made to what was submitted on the plan. And in doing so, if the developer agrees to that, would they have to come back to us to do that, or could you do that internally? I mean, I, I don't necessarily want to review it again, but would that be something that?
I guess with this request, what we're doing is asking that you give that authority to UDC to approve those changes that they negotiate with UDC to be done.
Okay. I'll hold the rest of my questions for the developer.
We, we did have discussions at the UDC about what those changes would sort of look like, and they were gonna go back and explore those and come back to UDC once they get ready for the permit.
Rusty, just, can you bring back up the, the rendering with, that shows the trees and everything on it? Can you bring back that rendering back up?
Oh, you wanted the site plan?
Nope, go back.
Oh, this one?
Yep, the proposed elevations. Are you able to zoom in on that a little bit?
No, it's PowerPoint.
There we go. Well, can, I want you to. Well, I want you to walk through just a little bit here, the, if you're looking at the space and I think we've, we talked about this, you're creating some little islands in between where you have the green space and everything. Can you explain and the, and the distance between the road and those areas, the in-betweens? Can you explain what you, they're having there in the rendering?
They're reflecting small understory trees or flowering trees and those little landscape islands in between the storefronts. Right now, the, the building is reflected as being five feet off that, off the multi-use trail along Atlanta Road. But there is play between the building and the parking deck to maybe if they need to move the building back to create some more planable area, there's an opportunity for that in the plan. For those sized trees, if they can get to eight to 10 feet, usually that's typically enough to support those trees.
Rusty, just to clarify...
Hold on just a second. Mr. Gould, you've hit your button and I appreciate you doing that. If you'd like to speak, would you like to yield to Mr. Lindley? Mr. Lindley?
Thank you. Rusty, so how far from the curb actually is the building? When you factor in the trail, the green space, and then the planable islands?
Okay, I see. I haven't measured that out. I know the trail is either going to be 10 or 12 feet total.
I think the trail is 10 feet wide.
10 feet wide. So the trail's 10 feet wide, you have a two-foot gap, grass strip. So you have 12 feet pretty much up to the property line and then the five-foot setback for the building based on this plan. So you're looking at 17 feet total from back of curb.
Mr. Gould.
Councilmember Lindley asked my question regarding front setbacks, so he answered it.
Dr. Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had that question as well, but also just one quick clarification point. Thanks for going through the recommendations there. For that sixth recommendation mentioned, something with the lighting, you don't necessarily have to go back through it. But the goal of that, is it to be consistent with the lighting that's presently in the downtown or is it going to look something different or...
Primarily, you know, Atlanta Road has existing pedestrian lighting and street lighting. I think it's addressing Church Street and carrying down that consistency there. It may only be really realistically only one fixture at that point because that's, it's not a long distance or maybe two, but...
Perfect, thanks, appreciate it.
Anybody else? Mr. Welch? I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Go forward if you want to get to the elevations.
Thanks, Rusty.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owners in this application and pleased to present this on their behalf. I think as, as per usual, Mr. Martin did an excellent job of reviewing the application with you and so I'm going to try to avoid simply repeating what he has brought forth, but want to try to expound on some of the concepts and some of the points that he was bringing to your attention and describe that for you on behalf of the applicant and owner. As Mr. Martin stated, this is a proposal to rezone the property from its general commercial to the mixed-use conditional zoning category for a mixed-use building. Mr. Martin did a good job of explaining it's proposed as a four-story building with almost 9,500 square feet of commercial space on the first floor that ideally is set up for retail, restaurant, and even office type of use with three floors of residential loft units totaling a maximum of 24 of loft units. There is a two-level parking structure and I want to reiterate again, that parking structure will be bricked to match where it's exposed to the right-of-way as explained by Mr. Martin. In addition, there is that full screening buffer to the rear, so it will be screened to the rear as well and that was highlighted by him as too. Part of what we are proposing, or what we are proposing is entirely consistent. And I think when you looked at what was presented in particular as it relates to the land use, the proposal here for a mixed-use project and building is not only entirely consistent, is what is, it's exactly the use that has been employed to redevelop Jankel across, directly across the street from Atlanta Road as mixed-use. It's exactly the concept that allowed for the development of Market Village just to the north of this property as mixed-use. It's exactly what the future land use says should go on this property is mixed-use and that's what's being proposed. That's the design, that's the intent, that's the vision that the city has had in approving its land use documents and policies is to have mixed-use in this location to expand on downtown and to provide for that as part of the city's downtown. This proposal and this project and this application is consistent with that vision in all respects. The project itself, when it's reviewed by city staff, I thought it was extremely important that there was 16 individual goals and policies, documented goals and policies of the city that are met or satisfied by this project and by this proposal. Those range in terms of categories from everything from housing to economic development, land use and quality of life policies and goals that are met by this proposal and by this application for a mixed-use building and mixed-use project. The project itself in terms of those benefits and how does it really expand on those goals and policies primarily, you see it repeated over and over again, is the walkability aspect. Ability of Smyrna downtown and the mixed-use projects that are there now, and this proposed mixed-use project depends heavily on that aspect of walkability and continuing to add that to the fabric of downtown Smyrna. From this project, you can walk to the Market Village, you can walk across the street to Jankel, you can walk to Bronner and enjoy the city services and park and what's offered there as well. You can walk throughout the downtown area. What does that provide? It provides benefits to the city, it provides benefits importantly to the local businesses of the city that are here in downtown, at Market Village, across the street. It provides a walkable, pedestrian-friendly environment that's not just limited to what's there now, but creates that fabric throughout this section of Atlanta Road to Spring Road. And that's important for those local businesses to continue to have that local support by adding additional residents. That's important as well because those continue to provide the economic engine that keeps those local businesses thriving, to have that presence and to have that growth in a controlled quality manner like's being presented here today, tonight for you. Also importantly, from a policy and goal standpoint, is the redevelopment and revitalization of existing commercial businesses or properties that are really being underutilized. And this certainly fits that bill and is consistent with that, given these three parcels. The redevelopment and revitalization of these parcels, consistent with the city's own land use plans, consistent with the city's own policies and goals and vision for this area of downtown Smyrna, again, meets that goal of redevelopment and revitalization that continues what the city has done over the last 25 and 30 years. The proposed zoning of mixed-use also addresses another aspect from a zoning or land use perspective, and that is currently this property and these properties are zoned general commercial, which is one of the most intense zoning categories that the city has in terms of commercial intensity, in terms of permitted uses, and in terms of entitlements. And that is it could be entitled to any one of those general commercial type uses and permitted a day without coming back here. Simply go build something else that's allowed under general commercial, which is a very wide range of uses, not all of which are appropriate for downtown. Not all of which and many of which really aren't what the city has envisioned through your own approved land use documents, goals, and policies and vision of the city. But what this proposal does bring is something that's entirely consistent with your land use plans, entirely consistent with the policies and goals that have been set out by you as a city and by you as a council. And it provides certainty to provide a mixed-use project, mixed-use building that adds to it, adds to this area, adds to the fabric of the city and is consistent with each and every one of those policies and goals and documents. There has been a good deal of discussion about the look or the appearance of the building and that's understandable. That always comes up in these zoning cases and zoning applications for your consideration. But here, where this property is located, is covered by the U D C, which has the very job and role to review designs, to review the architecture, and to review buildings that are going up in this area. That's their job and role. Now, they have reviewed it and have approved it generally, but they have also made sure to state that it will come back, as Mr. Martin explained, to the U D C for the final architectural details, which will be in place and be approved by the U D C. That's what they do and they do a great job of it, ensuring that the look and feel of downtown Smyrna within this area has that certain look and feel that you have come to enjoy and appreciate and that all of us enjoy and appreciate it. I can assure you though, in knowing this developer and this builder and the projects that I have personally seen, they look outstanding. It's something that this council, this city would be extremely proud of it built here. They do an excellent job and they can execute on what they promised to execute on and make it a project that the city and this council can be proud of. The professional staff has recommended approval based on, I think it was 38 or 39 conditions, all of which are agreeable to this applicant and owner. Planning Commission also recommended approval, as did the U D C just a few days ago. We think they're all correct in their recommendations for approval and we hope you do too. And with that, we respectfully request your approval of this rezoning request with all staff conditions as stated. Both I'm here, Mr. Joe Knight's here, and we can answer any questions you might have and appreciate your consideration here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Moore. Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I guess, and I brought up the appearance, and this is, as you mentioned, in the, under the U D C guidelines. Would the owner be willing, when he goes back to U D C, to consider some, some improvement to the roof line of this, or at least presenting it to them as some improvement in the appearance? I do feel like it's very boxy and it's personal opinion, right, wrong, or indifferent. But I just happened to pick up my mail tonight and there was an article in the Commerce Business Journal showing a, this building on the front of it that showed something that, and this is not what I'm proposing to put out there, but just something with a, a little different appearance along with the roof line of that building, I think would certainly help. I, I believe that the, the purpose of the building will fit in the downtown area down there. And I had a councilman, councilperson years ago that made a quote that said, "You can't govern style." And, well, I guess that's what we're trying to do here tonight, at least that's what I'm trying to do. But I do think it, something would be, if they would go back with something that could make a lot of improvements to the building.
Yes, yes. I was going to, Mr. Welch, I appreciate that, that question and as Mr. Knight indicated, yes, and I think that's the point of the U D C is to work with them on architectural elements and details that can be brought to bear, taking that very much into consideration as to what that exactly would be. I think that's why you let the architectural people do that and I think they'll take that to heart.
And the picture he held up was of Truist Park, so just make it for reference.
Thank you for that.
Anybody else have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Gould.
Hi, Mr. Moore. I think you've probably gotten the, the understanding that the front setback is a concern or question for some folks because having a floor, four-story building near the road is a little bit different than what we have in, in other parts of the city. But, and maybe you could expand upon why the buildings are front and the parking deck is in the back, which is from a design perspective desirable, but also I think that integrated well with our neighbors. And second part is just really the importance of the elevation shows the trees in the front and I think that's, that's an important element to keep if at all possible in the design.
Sure. Just to, to give you some sense, when you have the, the ground floor, retail, restaurant, office space in the downtown area, it's important that it be able to engage, that that area, that street front or storefront areas engage with the street, engage with Atlanta Road. That's why you see across the street where you have the restaurants and so forth directly across Atlanta Road, they're, they engage Atlanta Road because they're, they're up on it. Here, this serves that same purpose by providing engagement to Atlanta Road, not only for the storefront aspect, but also for the residents to walk simply straight out onto the street. That enhances walkability, pedestrian-friendly, it creates that kind of environment and engagement. As stated though, I think when you, when you see something that says zero or five-foot setback, it makes you think it's right off the street. But as we've discussed, or as Mr. Martin discussed and went through, the building actually is going to be approximately 17 feet off of the actual curb, so you won't feel it being up on the street. It's about 17 feet off the curb to provide for that wide area for the multi-use trail, which is a 10-foot sidewalk. And then, of course, incorporating the street trees and street lighting with that will set it back. It won't be an appearance or a feel that's right on you, it'll have an appearance or a feel, but it's engaged off the street as a downtown building.
Mr. Welch.
One more question. I don't know if this is a question for you, Mr. Moore or Rusty, but on the, the rendering itself, it showed several trees along the front of that building, but in the tree plan it did not. Is, is that the intent or not the intent?
I'll let Mr. Knight answer. Right.
Our goal would be to have trees along the front there. I think in the plan that we submitted, that's just the, the minimum amount of trees are required in y'all's ordinances, but we'd like to have trees there along the front.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
This is a public hearing. I'd invite anybody who would like to speak on this item or even think you might want to speak on this item to come forward and be sworn in by Judge Cawthorn, who is sitting in for Mr. Cochrane this evening. Everybody come on up at once and get sworn in. And if you have not signed this sign-in sheet, please sign it. Ms. Heather, can you please get that to folks? We only have five signed up. If there is anybody who has not signed up on this, come on up and sign it, please. Thank you. Now, I feel all you will come up and be sworn in by Judge Cawthorn, please. Thank you. First speaker is Chris Anulowicz, 1121 Parkview Place.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Chris Anulowicz and I live at 1121 Parkview Place. That's about a half mile from here. When my family and I moved to Smyrna about 18 years ago, one of the reasons that we did so was because of the walkability and mixed-use nature of this community. When we moved here, it was envisioned, and now my children do, walk to Campbell High School, they walk to the library, they walk to the community center, they walk here to Jankel, to all of the amenities that are around. We appreciate the ability to be able to get to all these places and have it be part of our daily lives. When I moved to Smyrna, the only option that was available was the Market Village. And during the course of those 18 years, we have seen through innovations, through public partner, public and private partnerships, we have seen the Jankel Plaza developed, we have seen development of Belmont Hills and other places that have added to our community's appeal and have increased our property values. You know, I came to Smyrna again 18 years ago and it has everything that it had when I got here. here, and even more, and I very much appreciate all of that. And I distinctly remember, especially with regard to Johnquill, and then also with regard to the Belmont Hills and other developments that were made, there were some protests against it, some voices, but I think that, over time, the wisdom of the city's plan and the wisdom of staff has shown that those were, in fact, very good decisions for the community and very good decisions for the city. Right now, I want to speak in favor of the rezoning request that is currently here, as has been discussed by the staff. The zoning request is completely within the vision and land use plan that's been developed by this council and by prior councils, and is a continuation of the vision and the long-term plans of this community. The zoning is precisely within the scope and nature of what has been approved and succeeded in the past, and I am confident that it will succeed in the future, especially given the very good partners that we have that are in charge of this project, both from the city and from the developer's side. With regard to, you know, what's been there and what's going to be there, you know, my very first meal in Smyrna was at Ken's Corner Grill when I signed my mortgage. My wife and I ate there. I used to take my kids there on Saturdays, so I certainly have a fond memory of it. But as all things, you know, things pass, and I'm very excited about the new restaurants and new businesses that are coming to Smyrna. And I think that in another 18 years, when I've been here for even that much longer, I'm going to enjoy having that development here. So again, I strongly encourage the city to approve this, and I very much appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Ed James, 2431 Reed Street.
Yeah, my name is Ed James, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak in front of you here today, this evening. And I kind of want to echo the same comments that the gentleman before me just spoke. This is very much in line with how our city is functioning and growing, and I applaud you guys for continuing to hold people's feet to the fire and following through on your vision. And I'm very much in favor with moving forward with this project, so I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Andrew Howard, 1707 Rose Mill Way.
Good evening, council. As I look at these plans, one of our biggest concerns that myself and my neighbors have is a little bit of the appearance, as we've all been discussing, and it's less so with the actual appearance of some of the finer details that we've been discussing around lamps and trees and grass strips, but more to the fact of what this could entail if it's not living up to its full potential for 24 loft apartments. It very clearly looks to me as though it might be something else entirely, and I just hope the city council is obviously taking that into consideration and that we're not signing up for 24 loft apartments that then turn into a motel hotel situation. So I'm not quite sure about the zoning. I'll be the first one to admit that. That mixed-use and general commercial obviously have their zoning reasons, but when I look at this, and I especially look at the retail space beneath it, it very much clearly looks like it's something that is not necessarily loft. So my main concern that I hope the city council will take into consideration is, you know, later on down the road, once this thing does go up, will it turn into something else besides loft apartments? Will it then turn into maybe a mixed-use hotel motel situation kind of a thing? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell, you didn't put your address down. Would you state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Well, first off, happy holidays. Good to see you guys. Ms. Heinz, I haven't met you yet. I'm Mike. Nice to meet you. You'll see me from time to time. My address is 1181 Church Street, about three and a half football fields from what we're talking about. And I am a significant advocate for this proposed plan. I disagree with the gentleman in front of me, only because I'm familiar with loft condo living. The average size of these condos is going to be, these homes is going to be 900 square feet. Mine is 726. So you're talking about a bigger place than I live in now. And I have friends who live in the development in Sandy Springs, and it's certainly not an Airbnb motel situation. Those are homes, and those are very, very expensive loft homes that do nothing but drive up the value of that community, even though they're not purchased, because they're bringing in people with disposable income who are spending money in Sandy Springs. I am a significant proponent of anything that exposes the world outside of Smyrna, Georgia to Smyrna, Georgia. I'm a proponent of us getting as many cool trendy businesses here as we can, making the availability of space possible for residences in Smyrna. I think Rusty and Mr. Moore did a great job explaining that we have a UDC, so lots of conversations amongst my neighbors is, it doesn't look like the Smyrna Market Village. Well, you know what? Neither does Wells Fargo, and neither does Ken's Corner Grill, and it never did. And just like Chris, my very first meal in Smyrna, Georgia, was in Ken's Corner Grill, and I was one of the last five customers there when Mr. Ken closed. And I loved those french fries. But I also love the idea of bringing something else and something new and something fresh into that space that is about three and a half football fields away from me. Am I worried about getting a nail in my car during construction? Sure. If that were the driving force in my life, I would be here every week telling you that we can't build any more houses on Church Street. I don't want any more homes on Church Street. This is a, it's a silly thing to talk about. This is privately owned land, and the minute any one of you, and I consider many of you friends, tell me that I can't paint my walls blue or put up holiday lights, I'd be offended. It doesn't matter what is going there. It's improving Smyrna, whether it's residential, whether it's commercial. If we were putting up a doctor's office, people would be thrilled. I think what's scaring people is the 24 luxury loft apartments, which probably aren't going to be shabby. Have you seen the apartments at Johnquill? They're pretty nice. So I am a big fan. I am a huge proponent of this. I think that this will only enhance and improve Smyrna, and I really, really, really appreciate your time in letting me voice my opinion, as someone who lives three and a half footballs old fields away, and this is going to be my new neighbor. And I can't wait to meet my 24 new neighbors.
Thank you. Ms. Sean Martin, just says Williams Park. If you'll come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Sean Martin, and my address is 2884 Anderson Circle. And so with this particular development, mayor and council, you have the opportunity to set the mark for how Smyrna grows. One of the reasons why this development has so many eyes on it is because it truly is the first of its kind in our downtown. In its current design and layout, we do not have any buildings that sit five feet off of the sidewalk. We do not. I believe you all appreciate the design and the fact that Smyrna has won several awards with stellar architecture and planning at its core, I believe is one of the reasons why you all serve, to protect those things that matter to our city. There are three central issues that I would recommend be studied further. One, the design and architecture. Two, the parking deck. And three, precedence. For the design and architecture, I really encourage screening along the perimeter of the property. The building itself does not speak to Smyrna architecture. We are a brick city, and that's one of the reasons why our downtown is so fantastic. I would also say that there is an opportunity in this particular project, because of the parties involved, that we could actually see a lot more than if it were someone who was not, who did not know about the intricacies of how we work. And for the record, I appreciate the Urban Design Commission for invoking design in their requirement. The second, parking deck. I suggest that the parking deck be absorbed. As you look in these elevations, it sort of sticks out like a sore thumb, and brick in Smyrna is not an applied veneer. It actually means something to the way that the building is shaped. So the application of brick along the perimeter of the parking deck, I think, fails in meeting Smyrna's vision. And precedence, why not set a great precedence along Atlanta Road? Why not require stellar architecture? Why buy into something that we see in every major city in these United States? So I suggest that we not move forward with the design, but instead require a design that reaps the greatest benefit to the city, to the community, one that we can all be proud of. And the other part of that is, I would love to see more expression of the brick on the building. I would love to see it greater than just one story, but two. And as the attorney suggests with land use, yes, it does matter, and this project probably does comply with a number of different studies and all of that, but land use is really a bird's eye exercise. The minute that that land use turns, goes vertical and those walls go up, that's where you see the vision really play out in a city. And so I just encourage everyone on the council, including mayor, that Smyrna is more than a numbers game, and I dare to say that this development is great in theory, but from what I can see, it has no vision. It feels like a mere numbers game intended to make money for the developers. And so I do want to say also that what goes there does matter, and some of the greatest cities that are well-planned with great architecture, they partner with developers. Partner, that's a word that really does mean something. It's not a matter of a developer coming on board and imposing, you know, the city imposes these requirements. No, there's a give and take, and so I encourage you all to consider that, because our city is beautiful, and it's why you're here. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Chris Wifel, 3289 Lee Street.
Good evening. Good evening. I support this rezoning to mixed-use for the following reasons. Number one, the comprehensive plan. This development fulfills many of the goals and policies outlined in the comprehensive plan. The future land use map labels these parcels as mixed-use, and we should follow the comprehensive plan's guidance. Number two, a vibrant, dynamic, energy-filled downtown. I share the mayor's goal of a Smyrna downtown full of life and energy, and I believe this development helps fulfill those goals. People must live downtown to give it vitality. Number three, sustainability. Mixed-use projects use land efficiently. As the building is occupied at all times of the day, there are fewer infrastructure resources necessary for its compact design. Number four, the environment. Mixed-use allows for people to live, work, play, and shop in the same area, resulting in fewer car trips and pollution. These parcels are already developed, so there is minimal impact to the tree canopy. Mixed-use, compact design, and redevelopment are three of the EPA's smart growth principles. Number five, lower crime and public safety. Mixed-use has been shown to lower crime, as there are eyes on the street during the day and the night. People feel safer when there are more people around, and when the downtown feels empty, visitors don't come and walk around. Number six, economic development. The project adds four or five businesses. It helps create a strong tax base. It's a multimillion-dollar investment in our downtown, and the apartments and employees provide customers for our existing downtown businesses. Number seven, more housing, something I've talked to this council about before. Number eight, transit. Transit without density does not work. Smyrna Bull Plan and the Transit Study envision more transit coming to downtown. This project helps anchor that vision. Number nine, protect our neighborhoods. Our comprehensive plan designates area for higher density and areas for lower density. These parcels are in the higher-density zone. Following the plan helps our neighborhoods remain lower-density. Number 10, my increasing property value. With an exciting, lively downtown, the property values of the neighborhoods surrounding downtown will increase. I want to walk and bike to restaurants, shops, and entertainment. This is the direction I want our downtown to go. Thanks.
Thank you. We have one more speaker. Michael Williams, 3317 Pretty Branch Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this particular development today. I've lived, I live in Forest Hills and off, in Pretty Branch Drive. I grew up in Smyrna, grew up in Lee Street, and lived in Smyrna for over 35 years. And you've heard a lot of people talk about the design of this particular development, and I just want to urge you to consider that this property is already zoned general commercial. We have proposed a beautiful development and a great building to go on this particular property. And I saw that the applicant had made some 30-something concessions on design elements and even had agreed to Mr. Welch's, going back to the UDC. Because there is a myriad of commercial uses that could be put on this property, we wouldn't have that control. Mayor and council wouldn't be able to have the same control they have over this development. I think this is an excellent development. I think it contributes, as has already been said, to the walkability, to the livability, and it's exactly what you have envisioned for Smyrna and what I, as a resident, want for the city of Smyrna. So I would just urge you to approve this development. And anytime a developer is seeking basically a less intense and a down zoning, I would encourage mayor and council to carefully consider that, because I think that's a great benefit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So our last speaker, so we'll close our public hearing. I did have a question. One of the speakers mentioned, you know, the rates that'll be charged for the rent. Do y'all have an idea? And if I missed it earlier, forgive me, but what are y'all thinking about for rents for the one-bedroom and two-bedroom lofts?
These would be very expensive. I mean, this will be the, on a price per square foot, this will be the most expensive building probably in Smyrna, probably a $13 million development. So rents will be well above $2 a square foot for the lofts.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Welch.
Rusty, does the downtown zoning have the restrictions? I mean, a lot of times when we do commercial zoning, we'll put, you know, no tattoo parlors and vape shops and things like that. Is that automatically restricted in this zoning that we're looking at?
No, but those aren't permitted uses within the
That's what I'm getting at.
Mixed-use zoning district.
So essentially, they are.
When you're getting rid of the GC, you're getting rid of those type of uses.
Rusty, could you, one question for you, just to address the gentleman's question about the building getting turned into a hotel down the road. Is that, what would, what would have to happen for that to happen?
Um, the hotel use is a permitted use within mixed-use. But, you know, if they're going to rebrand the building and make it into an actual hotel building, I would assume there's going to be enough change in those, the second and third, the last zoning stipulations say that it's got to be what it is. So if the building changes in a significant way, or the site changes in a significant way, they need to come back to council for approval for that.
So basically, in general, it would come back to us for public hearing and approval?
I believe so. I may not be here when that happens, so I can't tell you what changes between now and then, but that would be my interpretation if I was here.
Right, right. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess thanks to Mr. Knight and Mr. Moore. It has been a long process. I know they sat down with us first, I'm guessing it was about a year ago, maybe a little over a year ago, and I know has gone through a number of versions. One of the first discussions that I know One of the, the first discussions that I know I had, and I appreciate you all, my guidance, was that you reach out to the immediate neighbors, the immediate property owners. Now, you got mad when I was doing that. He's clicking his pen. So thank you all for that. The, I, I know a number of the changes that we saw from version one to version two were largely with respect to some concerns by First Methodist with a preschool and the what-ifs, what could be on the property as long, as well as a lengthy discussion about parking and concerns that the church had. So that's why we ended up seeing a, a very expensive parking structure. So I guess to add some context to, to some of the, the comments that, that we've read and heard, heard here tonight, but I, one of the, one of the big things that I'm leaning in on came as a result of several discussions with our Director of Economic Development. And going back nearly three years, when we were able to lure her back from Sandy Springs, one of the initial discussions that, that we had when we, as a council, mayor and council, elevated her in that role to a department head role, was getting a clear sense of sort of our needs and inventory of where we are as a city, where we rank as one of the fastest growing cities, not only in our county but around metro Atlanta. Where do we rank? And, and one of the telling things that was true three years ago when, when she came onboard and at roughly, Mr. Bennett, I'm guessing it was around 1:00 this afternoon when I sat down with her again, and she provided me sort of the, the 101 document is those same deficiencies are still here. And it is, it is a long list of, I know one of the, the big ones that sort of stuck in my head was that she had 13 restaurants, eateries, that wanted to come to our community, and there's nowhere for them to go unless they go build straight up out of the dirt, which in the environment that we now find ourselves with financing, largely, I think, is, is out of reach for most. Certainly, that's why we're not seeing them here. And then, so you walk your way through that. It's the same with, with retail. It is the same with office space. One of the, one of the initial items that sort of caught my eye on this project was that it would be the first Class A office space in our city. There is none, which is astonishing when you, to Mr. Welch's point over here, we sit a stone's throw away as a city from the battery, which is sort of the epicenter of growth in our county, yet our city sits on zero Class A office space. Same goes for Class A restaurant space. There's none. So we've got to, as a council, and I, I know each of us, as one of the speakers always likes to point out, we need to think carefully. Rethink carefully on every vote. But I think this one in particular, it checks so many boxes that where we're trying to get in keeping with a master plan that was wisely started with the prior administration, and we are marching our way through executing it, and that comes at the direct ask and demand of our residents. So I feel very good about it, as, as the gentleman spoke there at the end. It is a $13 million project and it, at bare minimum, I'm supposing. Something tells me y'all'd love to cap it at that, but my guess is it goes north of that. I think the, the reality is, we as a, as a body, we're hearing about government projects that get up into those, like a, a large thoroughfare that our predecessors left us with, but we rarely are talking about projects that we get as private, private projects that come to us in that, that type of money. So these are sizable investments that I'm excited about. I'm excited we'll actually have lofts in our city. This is something new, so, and I know change is, change is tough. I am usually the one that, that likes change the least, but I believe it, it checks a lot of boxes, and I think it's a wise investment in our future on every front. So with that, motion do pass is presented.
Have a motion do pass. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-0 with Susan Wilkinson recusing herself. Will somebody please go get Ms. Wilkinson, who I think was out that door, and bring her back for the, thank you. She's out there? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Item B, Z22-013, this is a public hearing, special land use permit to allow a modular classroom, 8.09 acres, landlot 596, 3130 Atlanta Road, David Stallings. Mr. Bennett, any background, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Covenant Christian School was originally approved by the mayor and council on March 3, 2008, to place a temporary prefabricated modular building on church property at 3130 Atlanta Road. The applicant is requesting an extension of the permit. The planning and zoning board recommended approval by a vote of 7-0 at the December 12, 2022 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I've heard these called learning cottages, however you want to talk about it. This is just an extension of their time to have this modular classroom. This is in Ward 6. Mr. Gould, is there anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ask Joey to present any information necessary.
Good evening, Joey Sobbs, planner 2 with Community Development. This is a special land use permit, Z22-013, from Covenant Christian School. The planning and zoning board recommended approval 7 to 0 at the December 12 meeting. This is, the properties owned are 20. It is about eight acres. This is a modular classroom unit that's been on the property for some time. A special land use permit requires approval every 24 months. So they are coming back to the board, to the council for a extension of that permit for two years. Community Development recommends approval, and the planning and zoning board recommended approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Joey? See, none? We'll turn it over. Oh, no, hold on just a moment. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody who'd like to speak for or against this item, please come forward now and be sworn in. Hardly anybody left. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and now I'll turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve item 4B, Z22-013, as previously read.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. We don't have any privileged licenses tonight, so we'll move on to formal business. Item A, CON 2022-14, approve the purchase of Tyler Hosted Enterprise ERP to replace our current internally hosted MUNIS system and authorize the mayor to sign and execute related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. In order to improve our service to our citizens, we need to upgrade our current in-house hosted MUNIS system to the newer version, which is now called Tyler Enterprise ERP and is hosted in the cloud by Tyler Technologies. The hosted version is charged as a subscription paid annually. It is expected to take several months to accomplish this, and any remaining maintenance fees that have been paid for the in-house system will be applied to the new system. The expected annual subscription will be $273,542.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any discussion or any questions on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion do pass.
Motion do pass by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item B, 2022-608, purchase two, single-sided 17-foot by 10-foot mobile LED trailers from Insane Impact, Max 1710 on GSA contract, 47QSWA 19D0030, for a total of $300,000 from fiscal year 2023 CIP funds, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Mr. Bennett, any background?
No, sir, other than what has been read.
Thank you. Any discussion? See, none? I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Motion do pass.
Motion do pass by Ms. Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item C, 2022-628, adoption of the City of Smyrna Classification and Compensation Plan and Recommendations contained therein is presented by the University of Georgia. And I understand this is the final step that we have to take to implement our class and comp study. Mr. Bennett, anything else?
In July 2021, the city contracted with the University of Georgia's Carl Vinson Institute of Government to conduct a comprehensive classification and pay study. In October 2021, the city adopted the recommended classification and pay changes for sworn police positions, and in April 2022, the city adopted the classification and pay changes for fire personnel, general government, and management positions. While we have made several subsequent adjustments to our classifications, pay grade, and pay rate since that time, the city still needs to adopt a classification and pay plan, which includes recommendations for several actions that the City of Smyrna should consider to keep the proposed compensation plan current. Additionally, several positions were reviewed to confirm and correct the appropriate FLSA classification. Several changes are also recommended. Staff recommends the formal adoption of the City of Smyrna Classification and Pay Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any discussion? I will say we had a employee lunch, holiday lunch, last week, and morale is very high. We're taking, taking care of the people who take care of us, and I'm, I'm very proud of that. If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion do pass.
Motion do pass by Ms. Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Item D, 2022-629, approval to set and publish the qualifying fees for the 2023 City General Election, November 7, 2023, as based on the current salary structure for the year 2022 at $756 for mayor and $567 for council wards 1 through 7. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Welch. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item E, 2022-632, authorization to adopt the Georgia Department of Transportation Services procurement manual for projects that will receive or are anticipated to receive funding through the Federal Highway Administration and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, sir. The city needs to adopt the Georgia Department of Transportation Services procurement manual to be eligible to receive and utilize federal highway administration funding. The city is currently pursuing certification as a local public agency for local administered projects, known as LAP, to be able to manage city projects that will utilize FHWA funding. The city currently has an agreement in place with Cobb County to serve in this capacity until the city receives this certification.
Short version is, this allows us to access federal funds.
That's correct, sir.
Sounds good to me. Any discussion? Have a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
So moved by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item F, 2022-638, authorization to purchase from Wade Ford at 3860 South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, a fleet services truck and service truck for water and sewer in the total amount not to exceed $173,000 to be paid using state contract and paid from vehicle replacement at an approved budget pricing and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wade Ford has recently opened vehicle ordering and allotment of one small truck and one large truck has been given to us. Public Works needs to be able to order a fleet services truck and a water sewer service truck. The current fleet truck will be sold, and the revenue from it will go towards the higher purchase price and cover the difference between the allotted budget price and the actual price.
Any discussion? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Gould. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item G, 2022-639, authorization for repairs and maintenance in the amount of $110,000 for Cooper Lake Bridge by Tidwell Construction Company, P.O. Box 1466 in Douglasville, Gracie Gray Contractors Incorporated, 110 Bluffs Parkway in Canton, and Nita Fence Incorporated, 3470 Lake Drive in Smyrna, for guardrail replacement, addition of fall protection, and vegetation clearing, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. After receipt of a deficiency notice from Cobb County, we assessed Cooper Lake Road Bridge and found it to be in need of immediate repair. As a result, we need to replace the guardrail, add fall protection, and do some vegetation cleaning.
Any discussion? May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve. Item 6G is previously read.
Okay, so moved by Dr. Wheaton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have one, 7A 2022-601, approval of the issuance of a commercial building permit for construction of a new commercial building to support an industrial use, 1885 Mitchell Road, the Conlon Company. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A commercial building permit has been issued at 1885 Mitchell Road for the construction of a new 191,806-square-foot industrial building. The project consists of an industrial building with associated loading docks, parking, and drive areas to support industrial use. The total estimated cost of the project is $14,679,000, and the Conlon Company is listed as a general contractor for the project.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anything else we need to know from you, Rusty, on this? Nope? Okay. This is in Ward 7. Dr. Wheaton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to also, motion to approve item 7A is previously read.
Have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Item 8 is a consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, could you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item 8A, MIN 2022-89, approval of the December 30, December 1, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, MIN 2022-90, approval of the December 5, 2022, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, MIN 2022-91, approval of the December 5, 2022, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item D, 2022-621, approval of the adoption of fees for short-term rental licenses and wholesale alcoholic beverage licenses. Item E, 2022-604, approval of the reappointment of Heather Bacon to the Downtown Development Authority for a one-year term, January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023. Item F, 2022-605, approval of the reappointment of Heather Bacon to the Urban Design Commission for a one-year term, January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023. Item G, 2022-631, authorization for a road closure for Terry Meyer Drive at Turpin Road for a period of five days for a storm drain replacement by Ardi Do Construction from January 9, 2023 through January 13, 2023. Item H, 2022-626, approval of renewal with Georgia Municipal Association for 2023 Workers' Compensation Insurance Coverage and Administration. Item I, 2022-643, authorization for a road closure at Campbell High School on December 21 and 22, as well as December 27 and 28, 2022, for the reinstillation of the raised speed table on Powder Springs Street. Finally, item J, 2022-644, approval of Amendment Number 4 to the Community Development Block Grant, Plan Year 21, Subrecipient Agreement Number CD 21-C21SA-A and CD 21-C21SA-F, to extend the termination date for the agreement to March 31, 2023, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
So moved by Ms. Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item 9 is ward and committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I'd just like to wish everyone a happy holidays and Merry Christmas, and hope they have a good time with their families this week.
Ms. Hines?
I concur with Mr. Pickens, and last night started Hanukkah, so happy Hanukkah. And on the 26th, we'll start Kwanzaa, so happy Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah, Merry on the twenty-sixth, we'll start Kwanzaa, so happy Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everyone.
Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick note, I'll ditto that. Happy Hanukkah tonight, I guess, the first, or yesterday's first official night. Wish everybody Merry Christmas. I want to thank everybody. I am in recovery, and all is well, and appreciate all of the, the notes and folks approaching me to tell me they've been thinking about me. It's been a, an interesting two weeks for me and my family, but all is well. And most importantly, wish everybody a happy and healthy two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I happened to be with Ms. Hines last evening at the Santa House for Smyrna. For everybody's information, she's one step away from being on the good list, and I wish everybody happy holidays. So everybody else needs to go see Santa, too.
You know, I was there, too.
Was there, too? He's two steps away.
Ms. Wilkinson.
I'd just like to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, and, um, Kwanzaa, I mean, and, and have a nice break between here and New Year's. With that, I yield.
Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick things. This past week, we were able to recognize Dr. Jean Walker, who's a former principal of Campbell High School, as the Smyrna Citizen of the Year. So very well-deserving. She's the, again, a long-time, former, long-time principal of Campbell High, Smyrna-area resident, and the current principal of Cobb Horizon High School. So it was a, I think it's a pleasure for all of us to recognize our, our really talented community education leaders. And then, secondly, tomorrow night is the menorah lighting over in front of Taylor Brauner and the giant gelt drop at five-thirty. So come on out for that. I want to wish everybody, everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and please be safe.
Dr. Wheaton.
Yeah, likewise with everyone else. Safe travels to all those that are traveling for the holidays. Notice a lot of weather. It's gonna be awful cold here, but hope everyone has a wonderful holiday time with your family, friends, loved ones, whoever they may be.
Mr. Bennett.
Just happy, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Ms. Penny. Judge, anything? No, sir. Ms. Heather? Jill? Hope everybody gets a chance to rest and spend a lot of time with their family, and has a real good holiday season. Item ten is show cause hearings. We have none. Item eleven is citizen input. We have three people signed up to speak. We have Sean Martin, Williams Park, not here. We have Kathy Omets, Countryside, she's not here. And then we have Stephen Jones, twenty-eight-twenty-three Spring Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Couldn't let the year end without sharing some thoughts of appreciation. And I wanted to start out saying thank you to my councilman, Glenn Pickens. I know he's always there when I have a need. Anytime I call or text him, he responds quickly. And he serves our ward very well. It's a very, very busy ward over there, and I'm excited to, to live there and live there all my life. And I appreciate him. He's always available, and that means a lot when you're serving the citizens and that you're available and, and concerned for what they're concerned about. So, thank you. Wanted to share my appreciation to you, Mayor. I think it was a wonderful thing that you called the faith leaders together, to try to help more people in need in our city. My church, which is located in Councilman Lindley's ward, happy to say, my pastor was at that meeting, and he had a lot of positive things to say about that. And, and as you've mentioned, and I've, I've asked him, you know, in your thirty-plus years of ministry, have you ever known a mayor to call church leaders together to help serve citizens in a more, you know, to bring together ideas and, and to share what they see in their ministries? And he said, no, that's never heard of. So I commend you for doing that. And he also shared with me that he noticed your, you had a joy and a passion to give to people, and to see people that truly need help get helped. So he appreciated that about you. So I want to share my appreciation to Ms. Councilwoman Wilkinson. We have many, I'm not in her ward, obviously, but we have a lot of conversations about her ward and her people in her ward, and she has a true heart for her people. And a lot of times when I see her reaching out to her people, either here or there, she has a big following. And that really says a lot, that you really serve your ward well. And, and when I was getting a petition to have some speed tables put in on my street, you took the time to come out, drive my neighborhood, see what my concerns were, and obviously, you voted to approve those. And they, they were still working great. They were really good. So thank you. And then a couple of men in the back that never really get mentioned a whole lot, Officer Steve Brennan and Officer Larry Mizony, they've become friends of mine. And I, they can, they can tell you that I've asked them a lot of questions over these past few years about safety of my home, safety on my street. They have a wealth of knowledge that has really helped me out, and just really appreciate them. Appreciate that. I feel, you know, so comfortable just approaching and asking them anything. So I appreciate them protecting City Hall, and I don't, just want to share that and, and mention them. So thank you, and I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. You, too. We don't have anybody else signed up for citizen input. There's no other business brought before this body. We're adjourned at eight-twenty-nine. Thank you.